All right, that's there. Can't wait to put my coyotes and foxes up there. Show them off. I'm excited about that. I love my coyotes and foxes. All right, are we, um, oh, everything's hot, right? You mean, we're live? Okay. Just want to remind everybody again, the mics are live. So if you're having a private conversation there, they get picked up on these mics, okay?
And for public comment, we ask people to come up and use the podium here.
Perfect. I gotta wait on the man of the hour, right? All right. Hey, Chief? Charlie? Can you guys close that door right there to the hallway? Thank you. Awesome, thank you. All right.
He meant the other door, right? The outside one?
Yeah, the outside door. The one to the hallway. Only because they're cleaning in there. So you're gonna hear the, yeah, that door can stay open. All right. All right, if everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is the man of the hour here yet, or should I move to the next item? Counselor? That's true. Should we just go and move to public comment? Is that right? All right. All right, so I am going to make a motion to, oh, there he is. All right, well, I still gotta open the meeting first. There he is, the man of the hour. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to open up the September business meeting of the Village Board. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, moving right along, we have a special ceremony at the top here. We have a longtime Village employee who has protected and served here for a long time. I'm not gonna steal the chief's speech. So without further ado, Chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight to respect Art Twiliger, who's served with the Village of Cornwall Hudson Police Department for over 20 years. First of all, I'd just like to express my condolences to the Twiliger Lyons family. Just a little over a week ago, they lost their mom, Linda Lyons. So if I can just have a, just a moment of silence for the Twiliger Lyons mom, Linda Lyons. Thank you. Okay, first thing, as many of you know, the divorce rate is probably about 50% in this country. And unfortunately, with law enforcement, it's even higher. A lot of it has to do with the hours, overtime, working holidays, weekends, midnights, missing birthdays, and so forth, which creates a lot of stress upon a family and a marriage. Art's been with his wife Janine for many, many years, and I know that she's always supported him. It was law enforcement career. And it takes a special woman to be the wife of an officer. You never know if you're gonna get that call in the middle of the night, you know, or they're supposed to be home and they didn't hear anything unbeknownst to them that the officer's tied up with an arrest and hasn't been able to make a phone call. So it's quite stressful, and it actually takes a remarkable person, a remarkable woman, to be the wife of a law enforcement officer. So I'd just like to acknowledge Art's wife, Janine, first for supporting Art during his career. Okay, now we're gonna get to the master ceremonies here for Detective Art Twiliger. I've worked with Art for almost 10 years. Prior to that, I worked, obviously, with him when I was with the town of Cornwall. First thing I could probably tell you about Art is probably the most thorough and analytical officer I've ever worked with. He could be working on something as simple as a pedate larceny case, and I'd go in there and there'd be paper everywhere. He'd have notes and who's calling what and getting contact information, video and everything. So in my 34 years of law enforcement, he's probably the most thorough officer I've ever worked with. And I bet you if you gave him a little bit, little time, he could probably find where Jimmy Hoffa was buried. So it's been a pleasure working with you, Art. It really has. It's not always easy with such a small department. But when an officer leaves at such a small department, that's made such an impact in the community, it leaves a void. And we're gonna miss Art. We really are. He's always been my go-to guy. He's always done whatever I asked him to do. And it's been a pleasure working with him. So I just wish him nothing but success with his next venture. Hopefully, it won't be too soon before he starts getting his plaid pants and his white knee socks and his white leather shoes and moved down to Miami Beach. So I just would like to present him with the plaque on behalf of the Village of Cornwall Hudson Police Department. Would you like to say a couple of words there?
Well, I didn't have a speech planned or anything, but it's been a good career. I've enjoyed it 10 year, 10 years, and then a little hiccup in the middle there, and then we had another good 10 years. And I'm happy I did it. I'm happy I did this 20 years, 21, 22 years, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss a lot of people here in the village. And thank you very much.
I think there's a couple of members of the board that would like to say something. First of all, Art, I've known you a long time. I think I've been here about the same amount of time that you, that you came on the job. And if I can say something about my experiences with Detective Twiliger, I mean, I think the two words that most succinctly capture what he is is a quiet professional. And I think there's a lot of people in this village that would set their watches by you coming on shift and you getting off shift and seeing you around and never the kind of guy you thought was gonna run off and hide or, you know, hoop somewhere, take a nap. Art was constantly working and took his job very seriously and really quiet professional. You swore an oath to protect and serve, detective. You did a good job with it. I just want to say thank you.
Art, all I can say is that you did 22 years. I've been here for 12 of those almost on the, on the board. And the words that come to mind are reliable, the go-to officer, and approachable. And I say approachable for various reasons, as being a resident and also being on the, on the contract side between PBA and the board. So, and for that, I really appreciate your cooperation and everything you've done for this village. But you put your heart and soul into it. We appreciate it, and we're gonna miss you. And I'm hoping that you're gonna entertain the thought of coming back as a part-timer. So I'd love to, love to have you back.
Whether, Art, we were just having a beer at Rockwall, or you're on the job. We all were gonna miss you. You were always here. You were always working and kinda reminds me of the old-time people that were exactly like you, who I've known throughout the years, living here all my life. But you were always dependable, being able to call on you for anything, and we're definitely gonna miss that. It's gonna be hard to fill your shoes, Art. You're a great guy.
Trustee Brain.
And to make it clear that we're unanimous, thank you very much for your service. I've only been on the board since April, but really appreciate having you and appreciate your service to the village.
I can open it for public comment in case anybody wants to say anything? Do I need to make a motion? Nope. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for typical public comment. And if anybody would like to speak to an experience with Detective Twiliger, they're certainly entitled to do that. Just please step up to the microphone at the podium here. State your na, yes, ma'am. State your name and state your residence. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Sure. My name is Jill Neim. I'm a retired officer with the Village of Cornwall Hudson. For those of you who don't know me, I have worked with Art for those 22 years on and off. I'm also a dispatcher in New Windsor, so I still keep in touch with him. I just wanna say thank you because, as a part-time officer, we looked up to the people that were here full-time, the people that had more knowledge and more experience than we did. And never was there a time that I could not count on you to be there for me and everybody else. So I speak on behalf of the others that are part-time, I'm sure. Thank you for everything that you have given to us, the experiences, the knowledge. And now that you are one of my best friends in the world with your lovely wife, Janine, you rock. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Sir?
Brendan Coyne, 13 Pollock Court. I just want to thank you for your service. I enjoyed working with you. The hardest part, I think, was working on the contract, the PBA contract. But you were very diligent. You really stood up for your people, and I admire that. And I wish you all the best. Congratulations.
Anybody else for public comment on any topic? You'll have a chance at the end of the night, but I can promise you Detective Twiliger and his family will probably not be here after the Route Canal with No Novocane that's coming up. So anybody else? All right, thanks again, Art. Thank you so much. We appreciate you, and you're always a Cornwall Hudson resident. Sir, I'm sorry. Yes, sir?
I heard about a high school on a bicycle.
So you've known him a long time? Excellent. All right. All right, anybody else? All right, if you're here for Art, you'd better get out where the getting's good. Thanks again. All right, I'll see, I'll see, I'll see you, bro. Boy, I wasn't kidding. You cleared the room, huh? All right. Okay, we're gonna move along now, and I'm gonna make a motion to accept the August 16th, 2021 business meeting minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, I'd also like to make a motion to accept the September 13th, 2021 special meeting or work session minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Moving on. The Treasurers' Report. The Open Utility Bounces Report for the end of August reads as follows. Village water, sewer, garbage, and penalties: $519,665.30. Town water and penalties: $318,000, $317.39. Did I say that right? 318,000, okay. All right, regarding warrant number nine, I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 2021 warrant number nine and authorized payment, including prepaid's totaling, sorry, totaling $635,726. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right. And the revenue expenditure, expenditure reports by fund through July. General fund revenue: $3,456,017.06, with an expenditure of $1,894,976.61. Water fund revenue: $1,487,925.09. Expenditure: $1,215,306.64. And finally, the sewer fund revenue: $339,332.22, expenditure of $27,598.77. Total receipts of $5,283,274.37 in anticipated revenues and $3,137,882.2 in anticipated expenditures through the end of August. The sewer capital fund balance is $404,421.07, including interest through August 31st, and the amount collected in village taxes: $2,827,941.46 through August 31st. All right, moving on to board department reports. Trustee Carnwright, the building department.
Village of Cornwall Hudson Building Report for August 2021. Building permits issued 13. Certificate of Compliance occupancy issued 17. On-site inspections 50. Violations zero. Stop-work orders zero. Municipal searches three. Solar panels zero. Fire inspections two. Arlene Rangirio, Ben Maggio, Code Enforcement Officer.
Thank you, sir. Fire Department, Deputy Mayor Kane.
Here's a report for August 2021 with respect to.
Just stay closer to the mic.
Oh, yeah. Okay, with respect to automatic alarms, there were four events for a total of eight, almost eight and a half staff hours. There were three medical events for almost four hours, two hazardous conditions for another about four and a half hours, motor vehicle accidents that responded to one for about three and a half hours. Mutual aid given, four events, total of four, a little bit over four, 45 and a half hours. They had two meetings, six drills, which were about 80 hours, and work detail, they had two work details, total 19 hours. So they had a total of 24 events for a total of 100 and almost 90 hour, 190 volunteer hours. The fire department this month supported the New York State, New York Air Show at Montgomery with personnel and an apparatus. Fire prevention will take place during the month of October at all Village schools. The schedule is being still, still being finalized. And firefighter Patrick Donovan will be returning to the community around September 20th, actually today. Did he, did he get back today, Chief? Or Charles?
He just got back last night.
Okay, great. He's returning, he returned today from his deployment to Oregon to assist with the fire suppression efforts in the wildland fires in, in Oregon. Michael Traynor, thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you, sir. And Police Department, Trustee Brain.
This is the August 1st through 31st report, the monthly police report for the Cornwall Hudson Police Department. There were 333 total calls for service. There were zero felony crimes. There was one incident of fraud, one pedate lar, or three pedate larcenies, one aggravated harassment or harassment. There was one arrest, felony arrest. In terms of vehicular and traffic incidents, there were zero personal injury accidents, zero property damage accidents. 13 summonses were issued, eight warnings were issued, 11 parking summonses were issued. No, I just said 11, but it was 10. 10 traffic enforcement posts and two radar or speed sign postings. In terms of non-criminal activity, there were six fire response calls that the police assisted with or attended, six alarm response calls, one noise complaint, one suspicious activity call, two animal complaints, one disorderly adult call. And there were department assists, there were six Town of Cornwall PD assistance, 11 EMS assists, one welfare check, four help, four assistance of citizens. And during the month, the Police Department continued participating in the Orange County Stop DWI Traffic Grant Funding Enforcement. During the month of August, the COH Police Department received a $700 grant from the NRA, which will be used to purchase training ammunition for firearms training. And the department requested and was approved to accept the formal resignation of Police Officer Matthew Sudol, and that was effective on the 15th of September. Respectfully, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
Thank you, Bill. Chief, just not to put you on the spot, off the top of your head, the one felony arrest, do you recall what that was this month?
Yeah, it was, somebody had, went into somebody's vehicle, stole some property, one of which was a credit card, and used that credit card to make several purchases here in the village.
Okay. Resident or somebody from out of town?
Somebody from the town, actually, was arrested.
Okay. All right, thank you. Department of Public Works, Trustee Carnwright.
Village of Cornwall Hudson, Department of Public Works, August 2021. Trash collected for the month: 116.5 tons. Recycling collected for the month: 31.25 tons. Yard waste collected for the month: 100 yards. Repairs and maintenance of village-owned vehicles and equipment continues. Blacktop patching, mowing and trimming of village-owned properties, sweeping in the streets, assist the Police Department with traffic control barricades for the Fourth of July parade. We set guard rail at municipal lot. We surfaced Homeland Avenue, Pollock Court, Jean Court, Carroll Terrace, Maple Avenue, Holtz Lane, and the municipal parking lot was also paved. Note, DPW has started to clean up Donahue Farm property along with its weekly mowing. Fall bulk cleanup is scheduled for October 18th. Superintendent Halverson will be in Saratoga for the October 18th through 20th for highway school hosted by the New York Conference of Mayors. Also, the, along with the bulk cleanup on October 18th, the yard sale will be held on the 16th. Dave Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
Dave, any follow-up? Does that cover it? Any follow-up?
No, we're good. Yeah, we're good.
All right, Trustee Brain, the Water Department.
The Water Department for the Village of Cornwall on Hudson. The August 2021 monthly report. Monthly production was, sorry, 24,514,000 gallons with a daily average of 797,74, 790,774 gallons. The department collected 52 samples in accordance with its approved water quality monitoring plan. In terms of treatment, routine water treatment operations for the months, for the month installed a new turbid, turbid, turbidometer, turbidometer, a meter to measure turbidity at the Black Rock filtration plant. The Black Rock, Black Rock plant was taken offline for routine cleaning of the Clearwell. New filter modules have been received for the Black Rock plant and will be installed during the month of September. In terms of transmission and distribution, 77 utility markouts were completed. A flow test for fire hydrants on Chestnut Street and Mill Street for water main design was conducted. Service, they serviced the village pressure regulating valves, installed a valve box risers in support of the DPW repaving project. Water main leak was repaired at Dock Hill Road. The service line was replaced at 222 Main Street. They repaired curb boxes at 104 Filomena Drive and 53 Laurel Avenue, installed a new water meter pit at 59 Deer Hill Road. Hydrant painting continued. In terms of meters, they read commercial water meters, read the village residential water meters this month. 20 final water meter readings were completed. 13 residential water meters were replaced. One meter transmitter was replaced. Seven miscellaneous customer appointments were completed. Terms of property maintenance, there was routine mowing of the properties and seal-coated all of the water property driveways. Respectfully submitted, Michael P. Traynor, Senior Water and Superintendent.
Thank you, Michael. Anything to follow?
No, sir, nothing.
Oh, good. Okay. All right, moving on to resolutions. First one on the agenda is the introduction of a proposed local law to opt out of allowing cannabis dispensaries and onsite cannabis consumption establishments in the Village of Cornwall on Hudson. Jean, I need to introduce the resolution and get a second and then read this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to introduce that resolution of the Village Board of the Village of Cornwall Hudson to set a time and place for a public hearing regarding a proposed local law opting out of allowing cannabis dispensaries and onsite cannabis consumption establishments in the Village of Cornwall Hudson. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. So, whereas the Village Board of the Village of Cornwall Hudson wishes to adopt a local law opting out of the allowing of retail cannabis dispensaries and onsite cannabis consumption establishments in the village, hereafter referred to as the project, and whereas the Village Board wishes to schedule a public hearing for, got it, October 18th, 2021 at 7:01 PM hours to consider the adoption of the proposed local law and to consider the potential adverse environmental impacts of the same. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved as follows, in accordance with the provisions of Section 617.6i of the Regulations Implementing the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, hereafter referred to as SEQRA, the SEQRA regulations. The Village Board hereby determines that the adoption of the proposed local law is an action subject to SEQRA, and, two, the Village Board determines that it is and will be the lead agency with respect to the consideration, review, and determination of significance pursuant to the SEQRA regulations, because there are no other agencies with authority to approve the project. And, three, the Village Board preliminarily classifies the aforementioned action as an unlisted action pursuant to the SEQRA regulations. And, four, that a public hearing be held by the Village Board on October 8th, I'm sorry, October 18th, 2021 at 7:01 PM hours at the Village Hall located 325 Hudson Street, Cornwall Hudson, New York, with respect to the proposed law, and, jump to six. Okay. That the Village Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. Madam Village Clerk, will you conduct a roll call, please?
Okay. Trustee Brain.
Aye.
Carnwright.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Kane.
Aye.
Mayor Galliano.
Aye. So the resolution is carried by a vote of 4-2-0, correct? All right. Will you mention at the top the fact that Trustee Gaylord is unable to be here tonight? So we are only four tonight. Yeah, I should have mentioned at the top, Dave. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on that resolution? All right, moving along. The next resolution is an authorization for the DPW Superintendent to promote, to post a promotional position. I received a letter, and after discussions with DPW Superintendent Halverson, addressed to Mayor Galliano and the Village Board of Trustees, I am requesting at this time that the Village of Cornwall Hudson Board of Trustees authorize the posting of the following promotional position within the Department of Public Works, an assistant leader. I feel it's very important and beneficial to the department to have someone that will be a second in the absence of a working leader to step up in a leadership role for the department. Thank you for your support and assistance. It's greatly appreciated. One of the things I have discussed with the department heads, I believe in second-line supervisors. It's better for accountability purposes, and when the frontline supervisor cannot be there, there's someone to step up and take, take charge. We have this position that we're looking to propose for. It has just not been backfilled in a number of years. So I'm gonna propose a resolution to allow the DPW Superintendent, Mr. Halverson, to post a position of assistant leader. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. All right, resolutions are out of the way. Moving on to other business. To establish regulations for the short-term rental of residential dwellings, the revised addition. So this one, we are waiting on the Orange County Department of Planning to return their, any notes, any revisions, any issues, problems, or concurrence. We have not received that yet, but we are anticipating it and we are awaiting. We have not received that yet, but we are anticipating it and we are awaiting passage of that once we get their sign-off. Moving on, to establish the October work session, which will be on October 4th, 2021. Understanding that Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day is scheduled for October 11th, 2021, which would typically be our business meeting, our business meeting is now going to be pushed to October 18th, 2021.
No, the business meeting is the regular time. We just moved the work session up.
We moved the work session up to October 4th, and then?
The meeting is scheduled.
On the 11th?
18th.
On the 18th. I'm sorry. Got it. Okay. I see what you're saying. All right. I, I really kind of clouded that a little bit. All right. Next item, information systems and social media policy. Like everything else, we are trying to get this right. This is something that, um, is a requirement from the village's insurance company. Um, we have a few adjustments to it, and I'm not going to use, Counselor, I'm not going to use the word "table," but we are going to, what's the verbiage I'm going to use here for what we're going to do?
Well, we're continuing to review.
Continue to review and then address this next.
The proposed modifications.
Ah.
Analyze, study.
Scrutinize.
Scrutinize.
All right.
We'll get it done.
Okay.
By the next meeting, for sure.
Okay. Um, same thing with the draft policy for police body worn cameras. The chief is working on this. Deputy Mayor Kane is working on it. I'm working on this. Um, the attorney for the village is working on this. Uh, we just want to get this right, and, and Chief and I have talked about this extensively. It is going to be a slow rollout. We're going to make sure that we have everything dialed in and that our officers are comfortable with the policy, understand the policy. Uh, the PBA, obviously, because it would be a contractual matter, is going to have to take a look at our final general orders and concur with that, and then we're going to roll this out before the end of the year. Chief, we're still confident we're going to be able to do this before the end of the year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Um, the Riley Road Property Rental Agreement. Um, I've already been authorized to sign that. Uh, Counsel has reviewed that, so, Joe, you want to add anything on that?
No, wait. Um, the, the, my review, the document, uh, comports with my review, everything's fine. You can go ahead and execute it really well. That's the next step. Actually, now, um, Mike Trainer will forward it to Denunzio and Sons for their review. We'll see if they have any comments or changes. Um, but it meets with my approval. You are authorized to sign it, unless for some reason we get some significant changes back, and then we'll have to address it, but.
Do you think those could be with respect to the insurance provisions?
We'll be flexible.
Yes. Michael, anything to add to that?
No, I, I think it's, I think it's a win-win for the village if this, this does, uh, get finalized. It's going to provide some income to the village to, to pay for some improvements we've been doing out there at that property in terms of putting up some fencing and, and black topping. It's a, it's another expense that the, our customers wouldn't have to be paying for.
Excellent. All right. Joe, any follow-up? Any board member with any follow-up? Okay. Moving along, the Maple Avenue property. The Board is finally in receipt of the second appraisal on the property. The Board is, we've only had it for a couple of days, is currently taking that under advisement, reviewing that, and then making a decision on how we're going to proceed forward. But we did get the second appraisal in, and we will have some further deliberation on this, and then obviously discuss this at a future meeting.
But not table.
But not tabling. I'm not tabling anything. Okay. Moving forward, uh, Donahue Farm Steering Committee Meeting, uh, which is scheduled for, gosh, it's a week from tomorrow, September 28th at 6:30 PM. Those meetings are held here every month in this room. The public is welcome to attend, and, uh, as the Board's liaison to that August body, I'm going to turn it over to Trustee Brain.
This month, we're September body. Har har. Um, the, uh, I, I guess the, a thing I should mention, uh, if anybody's watching on YouTube, this is short notice, but we are, uh, the driveway will be closed tomorrow for the duration of the day as, uh, company is coming in to regrade and gravel the driveway. So there are not many members of the public here, but, uh, if that word could get out, that would be useful, because I think people will be surprised. We only just got the notification tonight from the contractor, through Sinek Hudson, from the contractor that they were going to come tomorrow. So that's, that's something that's happening. Uh, in addition, the committee is, is hard at work on multiple work streams. We're in a sort of discovery phase of this overall project, uh, getting ready to obtain a broad spectrum of the public's opinions and wishes and desires for what the property might contain and be used for over time. And to that end, uh, some of the work streams include, the committee is putting together a survey, which we expect to have a draft version of at our upcoming meeting on Tuesday next week. Uh, the attorney for the village has been invited to address the group next Tuesday to, um, advise on how the conservation easement, uh, plays into what kinds of options we will include in that survey and look at going forward. There have been some, um, engagement with the property itself. The DPW, as mentioned, has, uh, been mowing and, uh, clearing brush and put up some signs, uh, to warn people away from the building envelope. There are a couple of trees that are under review as well, uh, one growing next to the Ice House Building, another one next to the driveway that are somewhat damaged or threatening the building and need to be reviewed and determined if they get cut down completely, if they get, you know, reduced in size, or, or what, what happens to those, and that will, that will happen quickly. Um, the, uh, and the village historian is recovering some of the items from the barn for storage, uh, as we evaluate what kind of improvements or changes might happen in those buildings. Those will be archived and catalogued and saved and either put back on display in the area or maybe used in the village museum or however it, uh, it shakes out, but those are just being preserved at the moment. Um, and I think that's the, those are the primary things. Am I missing any, um, did I already report that the committee appointed? Yes, I believe Mr. Kaplan, uh, actually already reported that we, uh, appointed a chair and a vice chair. Um, Ms. Erin Cousins is the chair and, uh, Kristy Larkin is vice chair. Um, and, um, we're just proceeding, we're getting quotes for stabilization of the roofs of the buildings and, uh, for junk removal as well. Um, you, working with the engineers and the DPW to, uh, help facilitate that. So there you go. We'll be meeting again next Tuesday, Fourth Tuesday of the month, uh, at 6:30 PM here. Thank you.
Excellent. Just, uh, Bill, let's talk, maybe, um, we should put something out on the village website and the Facebook page, just reminding people about that. If you want to just draft me up a couple lines and then, uh, we'll get it posted first thing in the morning. Um, Dave, thanks for doing the interim repairs on that road out there, because it was in bad shape, and now they're, Sinek Hudson is telling us that they're going to do some more robust repairs, so it's desperately needed. Um, and I want to thank, uh, the attorney for the village who did meet with Mrs. Spalding and Mrs. Larkin in regards to, uh, the parameters of the polling instrument that we're going to put out to, to get resident feedback and kind of give them some ideas on that. So, Joe, thank you for that. Okay. Any other trustee, any other issues on the Donahue Farm property? Okay. Moving along, sewer rates discussion. So this is something, I'm not, I'm not going to say "table," Joe, but this is something else that the Board is taking under advisement. I have, uh, had a couple of residents that reached out to me to ask the age-old question in regards to being charged sewer fees for water that they were potentially filling up a pool or watering their yard in the June, July, August timeframe. So we are going to look, um, I asked Mike Trainer to kind of do a best practices, talk to some other departments, water departments close by us, and see how they handle it, and the Board is taking it under advisement. If there's a way that we can, you know, correctly gauge this and help residents out, we'll do it. But we are, we are in the discussion phase right now and the search for best practices. So that's where that discussion is. Okay. Uh, the Village of Cornwall on Hudson Welcome Sign. Um, so there's a sign that is, um, down by the DB Mart, um, as you're approaching Rings Pond on, um, Hudson Street, and it welcomes people into the village, but the backside of that sign is a blank canvas. Um, I had reached out to the man that, that, um, had carved that sign. Um, I had gone to see him in Sugarloaf, and we met, and he came up with an idea, um, for doing something on the back, which would require us essentially to put, he called it an applique, and it's going to be hard for you to see this, but, um, I'll make this available at the end of the meeting if anybody wants to see it. But essentially what it is, is it says Cornwall on Hudson on top, and the same kind of lettering, the same type of carving motif, and then "Thanks for Visiting." So the people that are leaving the village, um, it's just kind of a, um, a nice "Thank You for Coming Here." And then he basically took the village seal, which was recently adopted by the Village Board, and he is going to carve the gazebo scene, um, with, obviously, I guess that's, you know, Mount Beacon on the backside and the Hudson River there. So I showed it to the Board. The Board is in concurrence that they approve of this, um, and we are going to move forward in securing this and putting this on the backside. So instead of taking the sign down for two months, which is what it would take him to do this, he is actually going to carve this out of a second piece of wood and then attach it to the back, um, and that will be so that we have something on both sides of our sign. Okay. Anybody, any addition on that? Jim, Bill, Dave?
No.
Okay. All right. The, uh, Water System Master Plan. Um, again, we're working with the engineers, uh, for the village. Mike has been excellent in walking me through some things, because we are putting together a master, uh, plan, which is going to look out probably 10 or 12 years, um, with projects that the Village Board is looking to tackle on the infrastructure end. A lot of water stuff, obviously, because some of our water pipes are, are aging and are in need of repair, um, and the engineers are working on that right now, and are going to make a presentation to the Board shortly on a plan going forward. We can't do it all at once, but we ain't going to wait. We're going to start moving in that direction, and we're going to break this down into bite-sized pieces. So that is currently under advisement, and the Board is going to consider, uh, the plan once the, uh, engineers put that forth, and, uh, will determine whether or not we're going to adopt it or not. Okay. Next item, Hudson Highlands Nature Museum, the lease agreement. So, the Hudson Island Nature Museum, um, came online in 1962, um, and signed a lease with the village for 25 years. That lease expired in 1987. In 1987, they signed another 25-year lease, which was set to expire in 2012. 2011, they'd made some reach-outs, um, and some back and forth, but it has been 10 years now, and we do not have an executed lease with the Hudson Highland Nature Museum. They own two properties, one at 25 Boulevard, which is at the end of Payson, and the other one is on Muser Drive, which is out towards Jones Farms and is in the area of the, of the town. So the only ones that we're worried about as a Village Board are executing an agreement with them, a lease. It is not, probably not going to be in the 25-year realm. It'll be something between three and 10 years. Um, their Board, Tom Bregman is the Executive Director, um, and he is working with their Board to work up what they think is fair. Our Board has been considering it and discussing it. For the folks that had concerns that the Hudson Highland Nature Museum wasn't paying their freight, um, they actually do pay water, sewer, garbage, and sewer capital. The only thing that the village provides for them is basically do snow pushes in the wintertime, but that is all subject to negotiation. We just want to get an executed agreement. Gentlemen, anything I missed or anything to add on that?
Nope.
Dave? Bill?
Nope.
Jim? Okay. So that's where that is. I will keep everybody apprised of where we get with them, but we are just starting negotiations with them now. I can assure you, this is going to be wrapped up shortly. Okay. Next item is Goose Droppings, Donahue Memorial Park, which takes me to, um, the fact that, uh, Superintendent Halverson reached out to me last week in a panic on the weekend and said, "Hey, have you seen these four pilings that had been driven into the ground down there in front of the gazebo?" We did some research, we found out this had been a project that was approved through the Mudina Creek Watershed Inter Municipal Council. The Board was unaware of this. Um, I did speak to the gentleman, um, who worked with the scouts. It was an Eagle Scout project. I asked that the pilings be removed. Um, it had not gone through the Riverfront Committee. I wanted it to go through the Riverfront Committee first, and then a Boy Scout project, something that is going to provide information on panels in a kiosk in regards to our beautiful watershed, it's a no-brainer. It's an, it's an easy day, but it just couldn't be there, and nobody had cleared it with us. No one had gone and done markouts down there to make sure that they weren't chewing up electrical lines or, not that there are water lines down there, but anything like that. Um, we've been in contact with them. We're in a good place right now. We found another place that the Board is going to sign off on probably next month, if not sooner, or the work session in regards to where that kiosk is going to go. I will have some pictures, and what I'll do on Friday maybe is put that up to show you what this kiosk looks like. It'll probably end up being tucked into a little wooded area on the side of the walkway down there, so it's not obstructing any views. Which brings me to the goose fecal matter issue, which we have down at the park, and had a number of people come in that were in a panic that we were going to use the United, the United States, um, Department of Agriculture, um, their Wildlife Services Division, which essentially captures the geese and either relocates them or harvests them for, for food banks. Um, and they were concerned about that. So we're going to elect to go a different route, just to try to keep the geese from landing down there and obviously soiling the area, because it's, it's gotten pretty bad. And a lot of senior citizens like to go down to the gazebo in the morning, set their lawn chairs up, or do Tai Chi, or do yoga, whatever they do down there on mats, and it's just covered in fecal matter. The problem we're having is, a lot of people think it's a good idea to feed the geese, and this is, I went down there today to take a picture of the removed posts, and this is hamburger and hot dog buns that were scattered across the parking lot ostensibly for the geese. So what happens is, is I'm learning now that I've become a, you know, Canadian geese expert, um, what's happening is the geese are not leaving. They're staying down there because they're being conditioned to stay. So, a number of residents have come forward, and they'd seen these at Basque Bell, um, out on a grassy lawn that they have off the Hudson River down there, and they've made some donations, and I love showing these, because I'm a picture guy and I like to see visuals, but these are the faux predator foxes and the faux predator coyotes, which have been donated. And these aren't cheap, but residents, Rick and Barbara Joya, as well as Mr. DiCarato up on Angola Road, have invested heavily in us trying them out. They have lifelike tails when the wind blows. We'll put them down there in the spring. We're not going to do anything before then. Dave said that he and his guys will be responsible for moving them around, so that the geese don't treat them like they treat that alligator head in Rings Pond, where they land on it and basically sunbathe. So that is what we're doing on that. I don't know if there's anything else we can do right now. We couldn't even do a geese capture, although, um, we're not moving in that direction until we exhausted all humane methods. So that's where we're at right now with that. Any questions on that? Any Board input? Or did I, did I beat that coyote and fox beyond recognition?
Did they make a mobile version of this?
They do not. They do not. So, but anyway, that's the plan on that. Okay. So that is, what did I do with it? Where did I move it? Okay, here we go. So that is that. Request for no parking on portions of Churchill Street. Residents on Churchill Street, which is the road between Spruce off of River Avenue and Idlewild, um, have a concern about how narrow the road is and some concerns that they had there, especially in the wintertime with snow, not being able to back out of their, or pull out of their driveways. I think there's three driveways, Gene? Three driveways on that street that are impaired or impeded by the snow. So the Village Board has directed DPW Superintendent Halverson to give us a measurement from the stop sign at, at the corner of Spruce and Churchill, and then to determine how far we need to take this, and then how many signs. And as soon as he reports back, he will bring it to the Attorney for the Village, who will put that in the form of a resolution, which then the Board will pass to put those no parking signs on Churchill Street between Spruce and Idlewild. Did I do that all right, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Oh, and then, do we need to do that tonight?
No.
No. And then, as the village clerk just reminded me, and then we will have to put that up subject to a public hearing, as Dave's nodding in the back. So it'll be subject to a public hearing. Okay. That's that. That's Churchill Street. Okay, that, I don't think I already covered that. Done. Uh, moving on to FYI, the, what's left in the wonderful September bandstand concerts. Remember, the concerts begin at 6, not 6:30 at this time of year, um, and they go till Remember, the concerts begin at 6, not 6:30 at this time of year, and they go till 7:30 at night. On September 21, Evan Tiedem and Alan Batiatto will be performing, which will be, that's tomorrow, excuse me. And then on following Tuesday, September 28, Jeremy Baum Trio. And those are the last two summer bandstand, summer fall bandstand concerts that we will have at the bandstand. All right. Okay. Before I move to public comments, want to thank Dominic Cordisco and of course Michael Trainor for their great job this weekend with Field of Dreams down at the waterfront. Good turnout, right?
Excellent turnout. We even had a pop-up rainstorm that came through, but everybody stayed through.
They fought through it, huh? Excellent. All right. Okay, without further ado, that is the agenda. I am going to open up the floor again to public comment. Anybody want to speak? Yes, sir.
Just picking up on what the mayor just said.
Sir, name and...
Oh, yes, sure, again. Brendan Coyne, 13th Paul Court. Thank you. Field of Dreams was amazing, and we were very fortunate, as Mike just said, it started to rain, but a few people maybe stood up and then immediately came back. Fortunately, the rain didn't go, you know, hurry up the evening. In terms of the, the evening itself, it ended up with almost a full moon. Tonight's the full moon, but it was a beautiful night, and Mike and Dominic allowed apprentice to help him out that night, and I enjoyed it very much. So, it was a great, great night, and, and I want to thank the Special Events Committee. The, a new, a new neighbor for the village, they took over the Grail Property, their, the Rural Migrant Ministry. I was up there on Saturday helping them clean up a little bit, and they're going to have an open house tenantedly scheduled for October 10. So, it'll be a good opportunity for people to get to know our new neighbors there. And I said this already about Art, but he did a great job. I worked with him for 10 years and really appreciate all he did for us. We are going to miss him, and as Jim Kane said, maybe he'll be coming back as a part-timer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else for public comment? All right. Well, then, without further ado, I am going to move it to board comments, and I'm going to start with trustee Kane, I'm sorry, trustee Brain.
Hello. I should have mentioned this earlier, the, the Donahue Farm Planning Committee, along with the village board, will be considering, the Special Events Committee has opened up the possibility of having an event at the farm in mid-October to sort of establish the property as belonging to the village and, you know, create a kind of celebratory potential event. We'll be communicating more about that as decisions are made. Just wanted to put that out there.
Excellent. Thank you. And trustee Carnright?
Just congratulations to Art on his retirement. 20 years is a long time as a police officer. As you put before, shift work, and as Steve said, there's a lot of sacrifice involved for a police officer, more than any other job, probably. So, congratulations to Art on 21 years.
Excellent. Deputy Mayor Kane?
Just a few things. One, thanks again, Mike and Dominic Cordisco, for movies on the waterfront. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it, I was gone for the weekend. Again, congratulations to Art, look forward to him coming back, hopefully. And the last thing is, I just want to thank Dave Work and the Riverfront Committee because of the, the Boy Scouts who put up the, started putting up the Eagle Scout project. Dave's men were very responsive in getting, in removing the, the poles, but on top of that, the communication with the Riverfront Committee, particularly Dave Work, we were unable to identify the, the location that we want the shed to be in.
Kiosk.
Kiosk, excuse me, the kiosk to be in. But he was very responsive, jumped on it right away. He met with the Eagle Scouts, so we're very, I just wanted, kudos to the Riverfront Committee and to Dave, so thank you.
Excellent. And I, I want to close by saying, I want to thank the village board, who do a lot of the heavy lifting and are really, every single day when I reach out on something, very responsive and, and help me out in making decisions, and I'm, I'm eternally grateful to each of you, all four of you. Obviously goes without saying, the village clerk, who's amazing and keeps me between the white lines, which is no easy feat. Lastly, want to thank Joe, the attorney for the village. We have been trying the attorney-client or the executive sessions prior to the village board meetings, the business meetings, which I think just make this so much more effective and efficient, and I appreciate you for your part of that, increasing our efficacy, so thank you. All right. Without further ado, I am going to, oh, I'm sorry, what did I do?
Did trustee Carnright have any?
No. I'm sorry, Dave, did I ask you? Yeah.
I'm sorry. That's all right. Oh, you did speak. I'm sorry.
That's all right, you're just looking out for it.
My little announcement.
It's all right. All right. So, without further ado, I'd like to propose a resolution to close the September 20 business meeting of the village board. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, under an hour. All right, keep in mind, folks, the microphones are still hot, so that means they're live. All right. Sir? I've never said, called it, I've always, I've always called it SEQRA. Seeker? Seeker? I've never called it seeker? No, don't tell me I have.
He also says mayor. Said a mayor.
Can't pronounce it. It's the one.